Introductory video. He's here. I'd like to call the November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the commissioners at our meeting this evening. I also want to announce that there is, anyone who utilized public parking for this meeting or utilized public transit to attend the meeting can pick up passes from security on your way out of the meeting, and that is valid for today, for today only. All right, commissioners, we come to the consent agenda. Are there any, do any commissioners have a question about any items on the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items that are on our consent agenda? All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of our agenda as published? So moved. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We come to public comment. And there are several folks who have signed up for public comment. So I'll go through the list of the people who signed up, and then once I've gone through the folks who've signed up, if anybody else is interested in addressing the commission during public comment, you'll be welcome to do so. So let's go through the list of folks who signed up first, and then we'll see if anyone else would also like to make comments. All right, the first is, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name, Kim Cosert or Concert? All right, sorry, way off, way off. Come on up, and yeah, come over to the podium, and you've got three minutes for public comment. There'll be an orange light when there's about twenty or thirty seconds left, and then a red light when your time's up. And we do ask that you discontinue your comments once your time's up. We want to give everyone the same amount of time.
Okay. I am from Savannah, Georgia. I came here to help when y'all had this catastrophe, is a better word. We have hurricanes all the time. Unfortunately, we don't have the same as you have. I come before you today, I know y'all all have rules, but we here and in Savannah, we have to make the exceptions. We usually make like ninety days exceptions to get something across, to help the people get back in their homes. As of now, what I understand, that you have property and you, they will not allow any home, like little homes, trailers, or campers to be on there. We're asking you today to help the people to be in some homes for ninety days where there's, they can be in there warm. Y'all are fixing to have snow. There's people in trailers and campers and tents. Tents need, they, those people need to be in a place that is warm. We don't want a dep- epidemic of people freezing to death here. That is a very serious thing. So we're asking you today to come, let them be put in homes for ninety days, let them get through the winter, then let them be helped, and then they will have the money to build a home or be able to move to a place that is warm. And I don't think that's a lot of, that's not hard to ask for the public. Y'all don't have this all the time. You have to make exceptions to the rules. This is not, y'all have never had this. We've never had what we're putting up with now. But you had to, y'all have to have sympathy and empathy for these people that's living in tents. I don't know if any of you were affected, but if you weren't, you need to go down these roads and see these homes. You really need to do, if you need to take the time to go, you need to look. You need to have them. There's churches and businesses. You want this, you want to thrive again. You've got to thrive to make it grow where you are. So I ask you today, make some exceptions to your rules. And I hope nothing happens to you or you've not had any of this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Jen Hampton.
Hey, y'all, it's good to be here, even under these circumstances. Oh, my time's up already. Oh, no. They're like, we don't want to hear what she's got to say. Okay, are we ready? Hi, y'all. It feels like it's been years in the past six weeks. First of all, I just want to thank y'all. I watched your last meeting and was really touched by the sense of urgency and the compassion that each of you expressed in keeping our community housed and getting folks in tents housed. And I, I really felt inspired by your comments and your discussion about the emergency housing, and I feel confident that y'all do have the compassion and empathy to make exceptions. So I'm here tonight to, oh, I forgot to say my name's Jen Hampton, and I'm with Asheville Food and Beverage United and Housing and Wages Organizer for Just Economics. First of all, I want to ask y'all to please help us at Just Economics to advocate for an eviction moratorium at the state level with your colleagues at every level. You can sign onto that form at bit.ly/elevenfourteenform. And then I'm also here to talk to you about providing direct rental assistance. As you know, many people have lost their jobs. We've estimated about seventy-five percent of the service industry folks are out of work right now and don't have money to pay rent. Yeah, it makes me choke up every time I say that. Many people are being evicted currently because they don't have November rent. People are already getting evicted for that because they didn't work in October. As far as direct rental assistance, we think that the county probably has the capacity to get up and running faster than many of our partners who provide rental assistance. So we're urging you to provide the rental assistance directly yourselves and get it out to people right now. Eblin currently has a thirty-day turnaround on their applications because their capacity is so limited because they're a very small organization. And we urge you to keep up the sense of urgency that you have already expressed, to keep people housed and to get people out of tents and into homes before the winter months set in. Because like the woman said before me, we don't want to have an epidemic of people freezing to death. That would just be catastrophe on top of catastrophe. We are also going to be back. We had planned to come here tonight as a group and discuss a whole bunch of things, but we understand that there's really urgent matters right now. But we will be back next time after we go to this month's TDA meeting to discuss again, urging the TDA to use some of their lift funds to help the community, to help workers and small businesses stay here. We don't want to lose all of our workers. We don't want to lose all of our unique locally owned businesses that make Asheville what it is. We don't want to see Asheville become just another cookie cutter tourist trap. So we need your help, we need the TDA's help, we need everybody, all hands on deck to keep Asheville here. And I trust y'all that you're going to be able to do that. Does that my timeout? Okay, I couldn't tell. Anyways, thanks, y'all.
All right, I'm Jeremy Phillips. Not really representing an organization up here. I came up with many. I've been here since the day after the storm, other than four days. So kind of piggybacking on exactly what they've said. I came up for rescues, I came up for search and rescue, and I've been here through the rebuild. Problems I'm seeing everywhere, it's not just in Asheville, it's Swanonoa, it's Black Mountain. As far as the assessments from the building department, we're six, seven weeks to get an assessment on whether they can rebuild or not. I've got permits that have been out here waiting for approval for four weeks. I've never in my life seen that. I've built all over the country. I've never seen anywhere you email a permit in and you wait four to five weeks to get a response. The things that I see is, you know, getting rebuilt, if you can't get permits, you can't get them in your homes. If you attempt to, I'm not going to say manipulate the system, but do something that Buncombe County says you can't do without a permit, which even replacing flooring or drywall being the disaster, they're saying you've got to have a permit. This is the only county in the nation I've ever seen this. I've worked Katrina, I've worked Hurricane Michael, I've done hurricanes everywhere and never seen that. As far as temporary housing, setting up campers on, you know, private lots or rented lots, you know, setting tents up. I've never seen, other than the law enforcement or code enforcement, I've never seen the lack of public officials coming out and actually trying to help. When you look up and you see every organization, even your local churches are backing up saying, hey, we're, there's nothing we can do, our hands are tied. You know, these people feel abandoned. I went through a community in Swanonoa this morning, right, and stayed most of the day before I came here. Nobody, as far as commissioners or chairman or city council or anything, has came out and seen these people. They've got tents set in their yards, they got generators with drop cords running into heaters. They've got kerosene heaters in tents. You got another, what, two weeks? You start having snow. Picture your family being out there in that. Would they be there? Would you have enough money to go get you a bed and breakfast for five weeks? One church I've been with helping, we've been renovating a home. They finally, at six weeks, you know, this family's been Airbnb under this church. They've got forty-five hundred dollars paying for this. Can you afford forty-five hundred dollars out of your pocket? If so, everybody, let's pass a hat. Let's get these people into Airbnbs, hotels. FEMA money runs out two weeks or less. So picture that.
Good morning, afternoon, evening, I'm so tired I can't even catch up with the time of day. Man, you threw me off. So I'm with Patriot Survival Tactical Team. In my normal life, I'm also a contractor, five generations of home building, very deep ties. I am also a member of the Builder Association of Blue Ridge Mountains. I've been in contact with them. I've spoke with other individuals like yourself who are dealing with same permitting processes. I've come up with a solution that I think could work for everybody and really remove the liability as a whole, which normally in the industry comes up to be the problem. Everybody wants the assessments, the building and all that. If I have a partner with my JDS consulting firm out of Raleigh Durham area, they're willing to come out here, donate their time, and provide us with rapid structural engineer plans for structural damaged homes that are taking the building department extra time to come out excess. We can do this virtually via FaceTime, Skype, however, I do it all the time on jobs. That's the first thing that we, we can get handled rapidly. If you guys would like to get more information about that, I will leave my card with the clerk, we can go from there. The second thing is the immediate need for housing. There's lots of ideas out there, lots of plans. I have a plan implemented and in place. I have a company in the Netherlands. They build sustainable housing units out of shipping containers. These units come completely ready, just to be put on a foundation. They get hooked up to water, electric, plumbing, and you move into them. Ready to go. I have another organization that's willing to go in once these are set up and pots, pans, dishes, blankets, and get these families set up. The cost for these units is not as expensive as everybody thinks. I have three hundred of them on a ship ready to come. We're looking to FEMA at this point to fund it. It's been kind of difficult with everything going on. We're also looking for private money. I can have them here in ten days. In, in South Carolina, from that point, we already have logistics set up to get them to Western North Carolina. I've secured three private property leases between this county, Yancey, and Avery to set these units up for immediate deployment. We also have partners with aviation. If we can't get to you on my truck, we have people willing to fly them to your property and get them set up by helicopter. I mean, at this point, time is of the essence to get these people out of the cold. And I don't know if you guys have any ability to get to your state officials because obviously you guys have more pull than we do and really get this ball rolling. I mean, as we speak right now, the president of my organization, he's sitting in Washington DC. If you get on C-SPAN, you'll see him right to the right, sitting there testifying against FEMA for the lack of help that they've given us. And, you know, they're here, but they're not doing what they need to do quick enough. So at this point, it's going to be up to you guys within the cities and all of us to really get this done. If anybody has questions, I'll stay till after the meeting, pass my card out, and let's get this ball rolling. Thank you for your time. Absolutely, I really appreciate your time tonight.
Good evening. I'm Sonya Higginbotham. I've been here with several others volunteering to help out in the area. I just wanted to give a few statistics, and I totally agree with what has already been shared here with the others. Just in the one group that I have been volunteering with, we've had well over three hundred volunteers just in this month, right here, helping. They're coming from all over the US, but also those volunteers are locals. They are people impacted by this storm. So we have locals coming in that may have lost everything, and we don't even know that they've lost it, right? But they're coming in to help their fellow citizens and all, and then we find out that they have the needs as well. Just in these last few weeks, we've had well over four hundred and twenty-five needs and requests to be evaluated. We have been able to close out about two hundred of those, but we have two thirty and counting because everything's not logged yet that needs to be evaluated. And the, we, we are finding people that no one has gotten to yet. We are finding people that they don't realize it's not safe to be in a home that has black mold in it. And we have resources and contributions where we're willing to go in and remediate and help rebuild. But we need help, and one, to get the permits approved faster so we can do it because we'll have volunteers here and not have enough work for them to do because the permits haven't been approved. And we also need, as the others said, let, we have people donating campers that gets them out of a tent, right? Little kids, elderly, those with breathing difficulties that are living in black mold. So whatever you guys can do to just help us help the community through this time, I, I just, God will bless you. God will bless you. So thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Parker. To support Buncombe County and Western North Carolina and the people in our mountain region during this incredibly tough time. And we're all working towards the same goals. Some of the issues that folks have mentioned tonight are on the commission's agenda this evening to take action on. So thank you all for what you're doing. We want to work together to get through this. All right. We do have a couple of public hearings, and we will take public comment on those specific items during the public hearings on those topics. All right. We have a couple of presentations. Actually, before we get to that, we do have one good news item. And that is John, John Hudson, our budget director, is here to present this. It's the recipient of the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. John, thanks for being here.
Thank you. The Buncombe County Budget Office has been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association, better known as GFOA, Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the fiscal year 2025 budget book. This is the twenty-ninth consecutive year Buncombe County has received the award, but this year we have also received special recognition for the areas of capital programming and strategic goals and strategies. And this speaks to the county's commitment to mindful use of public funds. This effort involves almost a hundred other county employees who help us prepare an annual budget as well as school district staff and fire department staff, but most of all, the leadership provided by our county manager, Avril Pinder, and the Board of Commissioners. If you're interested in some light reading, the five hundred and twelve-page document can be found online at buncombecounty.org. I have three of my four budget staff present this evening, who you have seen in various capacities as we worked on the budget, Sam Riddle, Jay Shi, and Esther Lael. I'd like to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to serve the county.
Great job. Great job, appreciate all of you. Okay, we do have several presentations. The first proclamation, which will be read by Commissioner Martin Moore, recognizes November as Native American Heritage Month in Buncombe County.
All right. Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Buncombe County Commissioners and staff are committed to protecting and honoring the cultural heritage and legacies of the citizens within the community, whereas prior to the official creation of Buncombe County, the land was first inhabited by the Cherokee people who thrived and cultivated successful lives throughout the area until their mandated removal was created via the Trail of Tears. Whereas while a significant number of Native Americans who walked to Oklahoma, there were those who were dedicated to remaining in the mountains of Western North Carolina, and they rebuilt their homes primarily within the North Carolina Qualla Boundary, became known as the Eastern Band of Cherokee. Whereas the 2022 US Census recognized that the North Carolina, North Carolina is home to over a hundred twenty-five thousand Native Americans, which positions North Carolina as being home to the second largest number of American Indians east of the Mississippi River. Whereas the state of North Carolina recognizes eight tribal nations within the state. The Eastern Band of Cherokee is the only federally recognized tribe in the state. Whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners recently supported the Eastern Band of Cherokee's request to rename Klingman's Dome, and today the commissioners celebrate the US Board of Geographic Names' recent approval of the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians' name change request of the Klingman's Dome to Kowee. Kowee, Kowee is the traditional Cherokee name for the mountain and translates to Mulberry Place. And Cherokee's syllabary, syllabary, the name is, I'm going to butcher that if I try. Whereas Buncombe County continues to honor the legacy and generous contributions of Native Americans and indigenous cultures to our economy, culture, and community. Now therefore be it proclaimed on behalf of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners that November 2024 be proclaimed Native American Heritage Month, and we encourage our residents to celebrate the rich and diverse history and cultures of indigenous people, to learn more about the storied histories of Native Americans, and to honor the important contributions that Native Americans have made and are making to our community and to our nation. This, the nineteenth day of November. Signed, Chair Brownie Newman. And I will happily now present this to Trey Adcock and our Register of Deeds, Your Risinger.
Commissioners, Chairman Newman, just a quick thank you for your years of service. Be remiss if I didn't thank you and Commissioner Beach Farah for diligently serving the residents of Buncombe County. Real quick, I'd like to just introduce the person receiving the Real quick, I'd like to just introduce, um, the person receiving the proclamation tonight is a Cherokee Nation tribal member. He's a resident of Buncombe County. Many students in Buncombe County know him as Professor Adcock. Uh, we'll call him Dr. Trey Adcock tonight. His work as the Director of, the Executive Director of the Center for Native Health is doing incredible work over on the Kuala Boundary, um, and then indigenous communities. Um, he's a great human and I'm honored to have him here tonight. Uh, please welcome Trey Adcock.
Shionga God, Trey Dogwado, Kalia Laga, Jagago Wata, Jalegi Ayeli Ayah. I'm Trey Adcock. Thank you all for inviting me, Chairman Newman, Commissioners. It's a great honor to receive this award. Uh, my family, I'm, I'm a Cherokee Nation citizen, Jalegi Ayeli Ayah. So my family's legacy is a part of the removal. Um, so my, my mom's family's from Oklahoma. So it's a great honor and privilege to not just work in Buncombe County, but to live here. I raised my daughter here. Um, in this landscape, my, my daughter goes, is in eighth grade at North Buncombe Middle. We love being in Buncombe County. Uh, and my work is Executive Director for the Center for Native Health, um, which is a grassroots, uh, native-led, native-controlled, community-driven nonprofit on the Kuala Boundary. We also serve a lot of families in Buncombe County. And so obviously, like a lot of people have talked about, there are a lot of families struggling and we're doing our best to meet their needs. Uh, and I really look forward to working with the Commissioners and people in this room to, to continue to serve those families to the best of our ability. For me, every day is Native American Heritage Day and Month. But I also recognize the, the need to pause and celebrate both the history and also the present. So I just want to thank you, the Commissioners, for doing this and I'm honored to be here. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much. All right. Next up, we have a proclamation recognizing our friend, County Commissioner Jasmine Beach Farrar, for her service on the Buncombe County Commission. And there's a proclamation and Commissioner Al Whitesides will present the proclamation.
Well, it's great to have families. Make sure we get pictures of this, too. It's an honor for me to do this because Jasmine and I are good friends and we came on together. And you know, you would think at her age and at my age, this should be reversed. But it's not. Let me read this. County of Buncombe proclamation. Proclaim, uh, proclamation honoring Commissioner Beach Ferrera. Whereas Commissioner Beach Ferrera has served as a Buncombe County Commissioner since being elected in 2016. Whereas Beach Jasmine, I'll say that, demonstrated thoughtful leadership and dedication to the well-being of our community through addressing critical issues facing our region, including homelessness, opioid addiction, early childhood care, public health, and criminal justice reform. And whereas she was instrumental in facilitating a partnership between Buncombe County and the City of Asheville to partner in the establishment of the Continuum of Care Board, a key initiative to address homelessness, to provide essential support to vulnerable populations. And whereas, as the Executive Director of the Campaign for Southern Equality, she has led efforts to advance LGBTQ rights across the South, striving to ensure equality, dignity, and safety for LGBTQ individuals in her home state and beyond. And whereas, her leadership in the Opioid Settlement Task Force played a pivotal role in securing over $29 million in national opioid settlement funds for Buncombe County. Funds which is being used to support critical treatment, recovery, harm reduction, and life-saving services in our region. And whereas, her commitment to early childhood care and education led to the creation of a dedicated fund and committee that ensures ongoing financial support for essential programs, providing our youngest residents with the foundation for a healthy and successful future. And whereas, her role in the Justice Resource Advisory Council has been crucial in advocating for reform within the criminal justice system. And her leadership was instrumental in the passage of a non-discrimination ordinance that has helped create a more inclusive and equitable community. And whereas we, the Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize and commend Commissioner Beach Ferrera for her outstanding leadership and unwavering commitment to the well-being and prosperity of our region. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on this 19th day of November 2024, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 2024 as Commissioner Jasmine Beach Ferrera Appreciation Month. And witness where we have here to set our hands and cause the seal of Buncombe County to be affixed this 19th day of November 2024. And it's signed Chairman Brownie Newman, Vice Chair Parker Sloan, Commissioner Al Whitesides, Commissioner Amanda Edwards, Commissioner Terry Wells, and Commissioner, Commissioner Martin Moore. But before he speaks. But let's give a round. But before she speaks, we have a citizen that would like to give a few words.
It's you gave it away.
He didn't give me a name.
Oh, well, you know, I'm a citizen. Oh, thank you. Um, well, thank you to everyone, first of all, in this room for, this is, this is our family. We're a hot mess. This is Calvin Wyatt and Lily. And, uh, I just, first of all, want to say thank you, um, to all of you and Avril. I'll, I'll get emotional thinking about the, the year, really, uh, the past eight, but the past year. The extraordinary heroism that our community has shown getting through a very difficult time. It's been inspiring. Um, and families like ours are deeply grateful to all the work, the 24/7 relentless, uh, effort to bring water back to our community. It's my friend Sheriff Miller for, I'm the citizen that he made sure got to the podium. Thank you for helping us through. We, you know, when we, when Jasmine made the decision to run for County Commission, uh, we had one, one-year-old child. Our lives were a little simpler, um, but certainly not as rich, uh, as, as it is now. And it's certainly been a family effort to support what has happened the past eight years. So I want to thank our kids. They're very excited for Jasmine to be home every other Tuesday. But, uh, just want to say how proud we are of you, Jasmine, and the extraordinary work that she's done, which will not end with her term. We still have much more work to do. And we're not going anywhere. This is, this is our home. And we just want to say how proud we are of you. There are a lot of kids who have access to pre-K who didn't before 2016. Think about the impact that you've had is immeasurable, not just for families like ours, but for all families. So thank you for giving me a few minutes. Appreciate you rolling with, uh, it's been an emotional time, so apologies for that. Uh, we're just very proud of you. Thank you.
Okay, there's one for me, too. Amanda Edwards coming up.
If we weren't emotional before that, we are now. Brownie, it is an absolute honor to present this proclamation to you this evening. You were one of the first three people I spoke to when I decided to run, and it was your leadership and your encouragement that led me to run. And I think one of my favorite things was shortly after being sworn in, he goes, I have a crazy idea. Let's do an Affordable Housing Subcommittee. And I've come to learn that anytime Brownie says, I have a crazy idea, it's a fantastic idea. And because of that crazy idea, we have made leaps and bounds progress in affordable housing in Buncombe County. And that legacy will not be forgotten. We're going to continue moving forward. This is truly the end of an era in Asheville and Buncombe County. Brownie Newman has been a part of local government for more than 20 years. And I think back to what Asheville and Buncombe County looked like pre-Brownie Newman and where we are now. And there has been a lot of positive change because of you and your leadership and your crazy ideas. And we are forever grateful for that. So I'm going to take a moment and read our County of Buncombe proclamation honoring Chairman Brownie Newman. Whereas, Brownie Newman has served as a Commissioner to the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners since 2012 and was elected as Chair in 2016. And whereas Chairman Newman's leadership has been marked by his commitment to improving the life of all residents of Buncombe County, particularly through advocacy for environmental sustainability, affordable housing, and economic development. And whereas, under his leadership, Buncombe County has set a vision to achieve 100% renewable energy by 2030. A goal that is being realized through groundbreaking initiatives such as the Woodfin Solar Project, the largest solar project ever developed by a local government in North Carolina, as well as the installation of solar arrays at numerous buildings and schools. And whereas, he has been a strong advocate for affordable housing, playing a pivotal role in securing $40 million through the Affordable Housing Bond, which has directly resulted in the creation of over 700 new affordable rental units. And whereas, his leadership in sustainable practices has also been evidenced through his advocacy for the green building policy and sustainable vehicle policy. And whereas, he has supported good governance and strategic planning by supporting efforts to implement the county's first strategic plan and legislative agenda. And whereas, his leadership extends beyond the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, where he's served on numerous regional boards and commissions, including the Blue Horizons Community Council, the Affordable Housing Committee, and the Environmental and Energy Stewardship Subcommittee, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, and the School Capital Fund Board, among many others. And whereas, the impact of Chairman Newman's work has been transformative, enhancing Buncombe County's environmental stewardship, expanding affordable housing options, and ensuring that the county is well-positioned for a prosperous and sustainable future. Now, therefore, be it resolved, on this 19th day of November 2024, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 2024 as Chairman Brownie Newman Appreciation Month. This has been signed by the 2024 County Commissioners, Commissioner Jasmine Beach Farrar, Vice Chair Parker Sloan, Commissioner Al Whitesides, Commissioner Terry Wells, Commissioner Martin Moore, and myself. Brownie, thank you for your incredible leadership to this county.
Amanda, thank you so much for, um, sharing those really kind remarks. And, um, if encouraging you to serve on the County Commission was like, uh, something that made a difference in terms of your decision, then it was certainly one of the things I'm most glad that I did whilst on the Commission. Because, um, you've done a great job and I'm really excited about your future service and role as Chair on the County Commission. So, um, I just want to say thank you to, uh, to everyone who I've had the opportunity to serve with on the County Commission and the public staff. As Amanda, uh, shared, I have worked in local government for 20 years. Yeah. So, um, so it's a really great honor to serve on the city council prior to being elected to the County Commission. And I've had an opportunity to work with just so many great people who like are into this work for all the right reasons. And have become really great lifelong friends after people have come on and rotated off different, uh, boards that I've worked with. But I do want to say what particular, uh, particularly great experience it has been to serve with a group of county commissioners who I'm serving with right now. All of you bring such really valuable and unique contributions to serving in Buncombe County, while also working so well together as a team. And that is, I think that's something that's pretty, pretty rare, uh, from my experience and really valuable. And has, I think, led to, um, Buncombe County helping to develop a really effective organization. And, um, part of that has been good decisions around bringing in great, um, public staff to help lead the county as well. So Avril, it's been great to work with you and all the members of your team, uh, who do such a great job just showing up every day, every single day during particularly pivotal times like we've been going through the last couple of months, but also just day in and day out, the work of county government, which makes such an important difference in people's life. So thank you for everything that you all do. I know the next, um, time in front of us is going to be a really tough time. I mean, it's been a really tough, you know, two months, as we all know. And the community's been really hurt. Our economy's been really hurt. You know, the county's part of that. Um, so it's going to be a tough time, but I'm so glad to know that we've got great folks who will be working hard as in our elected official capacity and in our public staff and working with so many great people in our community. We're all working towards the same steps. So thanks to all of you and thank you for supporting me in my role on the Commission, telling us when we're doing stuff right, telling us when we're off track. Really, I really appreciate it. Um, and thank you all. Great to see you. Okay. All right. So we have one more presentation. Actually, two more presentations. The next one is the Financial Quarterly Report. And Melissa Moore, our Finance Director, is here to present this item.
Hi, good evening. So the financial report for this evening, um, represents the end of the fourth quarter and for FY24. Um, this is considered preliminary because these are unaudited, um, results. So this evening, I'll go through the general fund, the solid waste fund, um, capital projects, investments. And, um, since it is year-end, we'll also do a debt overview. Please first look at the revenue for our general fund. The amended budget for the general fund was 438.9 million. This included 24.6 million of appropriated fund balance. So the, the remainder portion of that revenue would be 414.2 million. Actual revenue, um, received was 414.2 million. Actual revenue received was $417.8 million. All of the areas across the different categories you see here performed really well, except for a couple of areas that we've reported throughout the year in our different quarterly updates, recognizing some differences on intergovernmental from our decline in the Medicaid Hold Harmless distributions, as well as some other smaller areas. Property tax, I'm sorry, sales tax was a little shy of where we had projected. Looking at our expenditures, total expenditures for the year, $429.5 million compared to the budget of $438.9. If you're looking across the different functional areas, the performance to budget as compared to how they performed on actuals to prior year. We'll see that compared to budget and to actuals, there was $9.4 million remaining. Noting that $3.2 million of that was rolled over. So there'll be always be activity at the end of the year where we still haven't received invoices, it's in process. And so we do see those rollovers regularly. Look at the other view of our category expenses. If you look at it by category, predominant expenditures are always primarily your salaries and benefits. Your program support predominantly represented where your education spending comes in. Some of the areas that were underspent were the capital outlay and with a little bit within program support. Majority of that capital outlay is part of what was rolled over to this current fiscal year. So at year end, we also like to look at our fund balance. So in the general fund, fund balance is represented by five different categories. You have non-spendable, you have restricted, and you have an available fund balance that includes committed, assigned fund balance, and undesigned. So within our finance policy, available fund balance must maintain a minimum of 15%. So our preliminary estimate for available fund balance at year end for our general fund is 17.6%, or 75.8 million. You'll see that the total fund balance for general fund is 115.8, including those areas of non-spendable and restricted. Fund balance is a decrease of $10.9 million from prior year due to our expenditures exceeding the revenue and the organic revenue sources. So another portion of our finance policy relates to our unassigned fund balance, which is a portion of your available fund balance. Unassigned fund balance was $64 million, just shy of 15%, $14.9 million. Where the policy relating to an assigned fund balance specifically is, should that portion of fund balance exceed 20%, that's when we would transfer those funds over to our capital project fund. So when you look historically at the amount of fund balance that has been appropriated. So the last several years, we have been using fund balance as a budget balancing technique. Whereas, this last fiscal year is the first year in the past several years where we actually had to utilize that fund balance. You'll see the line on the graph is representing a measurement of the percent of your fund balance to your expenditures, which is represented with the percent that we reference in our policies, such as the fund balance policy of 15%. And the fund balance percentage is a measure of financial strength. It's also a metric that goes into the credit rating criteria. So this is something that we like to keep a very strong and close watch on. As we look at our solid waste fund, the revenue recorded for the year is $14.9 million as compared to an overall budget of $17.3 million. This represents a 23.8% increase over your prior year. Looking at your solid waste expenditures, the year-to-date expenditures were $15.8 million, seeing some additional increases for your equipment maintenance. So as we look at our capital fund, capital fund is built on a life-to-date budget. So we have broken that down by the year in which those funds were planned to be spent. Knowing, keeping in mind that your capital projects are multi-year projects. So the life-to-day actuals that have been spent is $52 million. Year-to-date for FY24, we spent $15 million compared to the prior year of $9 million. So keeping in mind, these are only the county projects. We also maintain all of our school capital fund projects aside from this. So now switching over to look at our investment portfolio. And there's always quite a few different data points here to align with requirements in our investment policy. Some of the key things that I like to point out, especially at year end, are the second to the last line on the long table over on the left is your interest income. So it's been a very favorable market for investments this year. Overall, all county funds earned $14.2 million of interest. On the smaller table over the right, total cash to record at the end of the year is $342.5 million. Of that, 92% of that is in interest-earning accounts. So being able to earn more and to invest back into our community. Looking at how those investments, portion is broken down between different types of investments. And in the table, you will see the different types of rates of return. So you'll see that the last three lines on that table represent our local government investment pools, which have been all very, done, performed very well for us, all over 5% throughout the year. So even with the feds reducing interest rates in the past couple of times they've met, we're still, we're not over 5%, but we're still very high. And those accounts are still performing very well for us. So as we look at the debt overview, this circular chart here just shows a distribution of the overall debt. Principal portion of the county's debt is $406.6 million. 47% of that is for our school capital fund, with 33% of general fund, which doesn't include the EGO bonds, which is another $14.7 million. So $406 million is just the principal part. When you look at the principal and interest, it's a total of $516.5 million. The table of two, you're right, those are metrics that are in our debt management policy. So your first metric there is the total direct debt to assessed value. So the total assessed value, which is our property value. Policy says the max that we can issue debt is up to 3% of the total valuation. And we're well below that, less than 1%. So looking at our direct debt payout ratio, and the minimum states that we have to have a minimum of 55%. So we will be paying off debt over a 10-year period and 81% of that. So that shows that within a 10-year period, we'll start seeing debt fall off. So we'll have capacity to take on additional projects within the next 10 years and without putting pressure on our metrics. So looking at the third metric there, the direct debt service to governmental fund expenditures. The max is 18% and we're even below 10% on that. So from a capacity perspective and to align with policy, as well as aligning with expectations from rating agencies, we're performing very well. And the last metric there is related variable debt. And county doesn't have any variable debt. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for this report. I am just curious, because I know this is for the last fiscal year. When will we be able to get a report on quarter one for this fiscal year? Do you have an idea of when that you'll be ready to present?
What day are we? We're probably in, it will be in December. I'm trying to think of like the holidays and stuff. We are prepared to close out those reporting periods and bring that forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Melissa. All right, the last presentation is on the Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization Quarterly Update. Nate Pennington.
Thank you. I'm going to be brief on this. This is a quarterly update and we're required to present to you. Wait for the presentation to get queued up real quick. Okay, just to rehash and remind everyone, as this is an update, we received a grant from the North Carolina Department of Commerce. This is through their Rural Economic Development Division. It's a maximum award of $400,000 and the goal is for home repair. The items in blue are new. The items in black are things that we've discussed before. The last time we saw you all, we reported on selecting five home repair sites. We've now moved that up to get to nine additional sites. And we've also had, since we've had the storm, we've had communications with Department of Commerce and Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity. As many of y'all may know, Asheville Habitat for Humanity sustained a lot of damage in their offices there on Meadow Road. So we've been working through that. And mainly, we've been in communications with the Department of Commerce on the use of these dollars to also support Halleen repairs in addition to what this program was already meant to be. So we don't have any additional information at this time to report on that, but we are in communication with Commerce. This is the selection criteria. Again, pre-storm, these are the kind of things that were eligible for repairs. The idea here is that if you can make some of these basic repairs, you keep some in their home and it keeps the chain reaction of occurring with other things that happen after those initial damages. Sites six through 14 spread throughout the county. We're really trying to get a good geographic cross-section across the county of all the different sites that we choose from an equity perspective. That's just so you scatter shot maps, you can kind of see where we are. The red dots indicate the additional sites that we've covered thus far. Again, in blue, these are updates, looking at potential contract amendments to expand the scope. $100,000 typically covers about 20 repairs. These could be things from, everything from roof repair to septic repair, gutters, you know, siding to houses, things of that nature. We are looking to expand our site selection. There's a number of criteria you have to meet. There are a number of reviews you have to meet, including environmental reviews that we are conducting and working with within the program constraints. Once they are cleared by the Department of Commerce, then we can release Habitat for Humanity to begin the home repairs themselves. With that being said, that concludes our brief presentation and update for tonight. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thanks, Nate. Okay, we have three public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is to consider an amendment to Chapter 78 of the Buncombe County Zoning Ordinance to regulate cryptocurrency mining operations, data centers, and government protective services. And Gillian Phillips is here to get us started on this.
Good evening. I'll just wait for the presentation. Today, I'm here to present regarding ZPH 2024-0024, which is an amendment to the permitted use table of the Buncombe County zoning ordinance. The purpose of this ordinance is to, for three separate uses, cryptocurrency mining operations, data centers, and then government protective services. Cryptocurrency mining, the commissioners placed a moratorium on that in May 2023 so staff could study how to regulate it. They then extended that moratorium in May 2024. Data centers are defined as a group of computer servers used for remote storage, processing, or distribution of data. It does not include crypto mining facilities. And defining those and putting standards in the zoning ordinance is part of updating and modernization of the zoning ordinance. Government protection services, the oddball in the group. We had a new fire station proposed to be built in an area that it wasn't currently permitted in. For the safety of county visitors and residents, government protective services need to be permitted in all zoning districts. So this includes fire stations, police stations, E911 centers, and EMS stations. As part of the process of drafting text amendments, we do an equity analysis. And just to think, some things to point out about these three separate uses. Cryptocurrency mining, it's often cited where land is cheap. It can have negative impacts on the environment and surrounding communities. It has the potential to cause environmental justice issues. And there's no jobs created or products or services offered locally with a cryptocurrency mining center. A data center supports commerce, research, government services, and the economy. And if it is permitted in commercial zoning districts, it'll allow for minimal impacts to residential and rural communities. And then government protective services. Allowing that use in all districts removes one barrier for communities to have increased level of service for protection like E911 fire and police. These proposed text amendments are supported by the comprehensive plan in our Growth Equity and Conservation Chapter, our Farms, Forest, and Environment Chapter, our Health and Recreation Chapter, and our Infrastructure and Energy Chapter. When we were looking at regulations for cryptocurrency and data center regulations, we looked at McDowell County, North Carolina, and then Waynesville, North Carolina. And they both have bans on cryptocurrency mining. Greenville, North Carolina, Haywood County, North Carolina, and Clay County. Greenville County, Greenville, North Carolina, and Haywood County have specific standards separating them from residential uses, limits on time, and regulations regarding noise. And then Clay County also has a total ban on cryptocurrency. For data center regulation examples, we actually looked at Prince William County, Virginia, and Chandler, Arizona. So the summary of the proposed text amendment, we added a definition of cryptocurrency mining operation to the definition section. We add a definition of data centers to the definition section. We add a government protection services to the permitted use table to allow it as a use by right in all zoning districts. Added data centers to the permitted use table and permit it in the CS, EMP, PS, and AI zoning districts, which are commercial zoning districts, with special requirements. Added special requirements, standards for data centers to include sound study, facility enclosure, certification of noise level, setback requirements from residential properties and structures, generator use of hours of operation and screening requirements. And then we added cryptocurrency mining to the permitted use table, but prohibited it in all zoning districts. The notice for this public hearing was properly done. There was a notice in the Asheville Citizen Times on 11/8 and 11/15. The action by the planning board was taken on September 16th. They voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval and that the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan through the Board of Commissioners. The requested action by the Board of Commissioners is to hold a public hearing, vote on the proposed text amendment with a comprehensive plan consistency statement. And at this point, I'll open it up if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any initial questions? All right, if not, then let's open the public hearing at 6:09 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this item? And no one has signed up for this hearing? You don't have to sign up. If you're interested in speaking, you can do so now. All right, and so there's, just share your name and where you live. And there's three minutes for public comment from each person. So thanks for being here.
All right, my name's George Shulley. Born and raised in Alaska. I moved down here.
I moved down here three years ago. I know a lot of this stuff sounds great. And it's not sound. I know there's a lot of work that's being done, but there's a lot of work that I'm doing out there. Not me, a lot of other folks. And we're going to do an outreach that there's people that don't even have phones that can even, they didn't even know what's happening right now. So we need to free up some land so these people have a place to stay. I know there's permitting issues with tiny homes and all those other type of things. But we need the government to step up.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt for just one moment? So we're going to have another public hearing on changes to the permitting process for emergency housing? Is that the topic you want to speak on?
I will speak on that also now, but what I need now is for, I don't know. I'd like to take you guys out and follow a day with me because the stories that I'm hearing is horrendous. I mean, there's people that are still suffering. When I say suffering, why is it that our group went out on a body recovery a week ago after two people? And when she got the body bag and everything like that, she rolled over. There's a seven-year-old girl hanging on to that, her dad. There's still people out there suffering. We need some red tape cut. I know that the Red Cross, I went to the Red Cross shelter. I got, you know, I got medical issues. I got cancer. I need a solar power generator. Went to Lowe's, they gave me money to pay for it. And then supposedly the system just deleted me from it and they don't know where it went. And it was a disposable card, so now I'm stuck without a generator and they're trying to figure out what to do. But I don't care about myself. We need folks like him who's third generation that lives in Bee Trees, family in Bee Trees. Why doesn't that watershed have power hooked up to the deal where they could let some of that water go? I know that North Carolina got caught with their pants down on this hurricane, but there's a lot of red tape that needs to be cut. People that don't have addresses, you know, FEMA comes in, don't have a dress, boom, you're bounced out the door. And then, so they're tired of, hey, the government's not doing anything for me. So when I get out there and I find folks that are still suffering because they don't have any way, and we bring them in, I try to get them out. These are simple people. They can't come and articulate the way a lot of us folks can, but they're still out there suffering. And I know that, you know, because I dealt with the union and I dealt with board meetings and all this other stuff. But there's got to be a way we can get help to those folks or get us help to help those folks without sitting here saying, hey, you know, crypto mining? Last thing, people, I mean, there's probably a big thing. You want to undo your budget, loosen up the restraints on SB 20, I think it's 15, the marijuana laws. I come from Alaska, it took many years to get that passed. And once it did, tax problems started going away. The revenue started coming in. So I don't know what the hell I just did.
It's okay. Thank you for, thank you.
But that's where, I would like to introduce you to Billy. I found him, you know, in a camp over here that, and I'll let you tell him.
Well, let him speak. I do just, and you're welcome to, you're welcome to speak. I just want to reiterate, so this public hearing is on the land use ordinance for the data centers and crypto mining, et cetera. We are going to have a separate public hearing around some opportunities on flexibility on permitting for housing. That'll be coming up in a minute. You're welcome to speak. Just want to make sure everyone's clear on which topic we're on. Go ahead.
I really don't know nothing about the crypto mining stuff, you know?
Could you share your, could you share your name and where you live?
I'm William Burgess, I live in Swan and All. I've lived in Swan and All, 10 area my whole life. Like, all the help that I've seen come through out there has been from like people from out of state, man. Like, it's a, I know like y'all can only do what y'all can do from the desk, you know what I mean? Like, it's like, y'all just put into motion things to allow people to do what they do, you know? Like, so it's not really so much on y'all as much as it is like the people under y'all that they're not. It's like, I know y'all have best interest for, you know, this area and this town, or you wouldn't be in the position that you're in, you know? But like, I was running supplies and was cleaning up the park. And I had some officers in behind my truck. This is after the state of disaster was, you know, called out by, I guess, the governor or whatever. And like, really like, they put me out of my vehicle on the, you know, on, you know, foot with my two dogs and only what I could carry. And I was living in my truck at the time because I couldn't even get to my home because the road's destroyed. And I've been just running ragged trying to get my vehicle back to continue to help my community, man. And every obstacle that can even be thrown in my direction has been thrown in my direction. And it's like, just took the wind out of my sails, man. It's like, I'm glad I met the people that I've met that have tried to help me where they can. And I don't know, just trying to like, you know, I got a voice too, you know? I'm trying to be heard. Like, I just want to help my, I just want to help my people, man. I just want to help my hometown. I've lived in Swan and All my whole life, man. Everything I know from my childhood is destroyed and they take the only thing that I've got that I've worked for. And I was poor before this happened and I was giving my money away helping people. And they treated me like scum, man, like for no reason. And I'm still out here helping, man. Like, the place that they found me, it's not even where I live. I'm just there helping, you know, my friends and my family, try to help them rebuild, you know, their place because they lost everything, you know? And it's like, you know, if anybody can help me, if anybody can, you know, hear my voice and help my people, it's you guys because that's what y'all are here to do, right? You know? And I guess, you know, that's really like, you know, all I got to say, you know? Thank y'all for being who you are, you know?
Thank you for coming out and speaking. And we've got your name, but if you can share your contact information with the county clerk too, we'll have someone follow up with you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right, thanks to everyone who came out. I'll close the public hearing at 6:16 PM. Commissioners, are there further questions on the proposed amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick question for planning staff. Nate, just high level, the 5,000 square foot definition of a data center, or that number, I guess, what's that tied to? Is that, does that come from an average size of a data center? Or do you know where that number comes from?
I think we looked at a number of case studies with other communities and we did some benchmarking. So that's kind of where we landed with that. Yeah, had a long conversation with IT.
Okay.
Buncombe County operates two data centers. And we have the National Climatic Data Center here. So what we wanted to do is we make sure that we scooped up and made sure that we accounted for what those look like.
I guess part of why I ask is I assume the ones that are being built today or proposed are larger than that, much larger than that.
I mean, it's a wide spectrum. But so if you had like, if you had, you know, as we gravitate more and more and more towards AI and other, we're going to see much larger ones. I don't know if they're going to be cited here. We're probably going to see more of the small to medium-sized ones. But we do have, probably one of the largest ones is probably the National Climatic Data Center. If you wanted to say, what's our largest in Buncombe County? I don't know if that is currently the record holder, but it is one of the larger ones. Thanks.
All right. There's no other questions? Is there a motion regarding the proposed text amendment?
I'll make the motion to approve the text amendments as written and proposed.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Nate. Next, we have a public hearing to consider an amendment to Chapter 78 of the Buncombe County zoning ordinance to create standards to allow emergency housing within Buncombe County in response to Tropical Storm Helene.
Yes, and Shannon's going to present this one. I just wanted to be real clear. We've heard a lot, I've heard a lot of comments today, heard a lot of comments. I've talked to, we've talked to quite a few people in planning every day. It's generally where the conversation begins in terms of hurricane recovery because planning does a lot of things, whether it be flood plain permitting, assisting with steep slope properties. The scope of the storm was so large that it wasn't just a flood event. It wasn't just a wind event. It wasn't just a landslide event. This hit multiple components and it was so wide scale and hit so many different coves and valleys. We have pulled out every single stop that we can at this point to administratively. And to be clear, we're getting people in RVs now on their property. That's happening now. But this amendment is very important because it gives the additional flexibility we need working with our FEMA partners, working with our state partners, working with the processes that are needed to vet other third-party vendors. This gets us to that next level. And I'll let Shannon and Jillian explain this amendment in detail. And of course, we're here for any questions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is the review of ZPH 2024-00033, which is the Emergency Housing Standards Text Amendment. And again, I'm Shannon Capizali with the Planning Department. So the purpose of this text amendment is to address the following uses in the Buncombe County zoning ordinance, which is emergency housing. These standards address short-term temporary housing needs for people experiencing an impact because of a declared federal, state, or local disaster. So it would not be just exclusive to this particular disaster. Following a natural disaster, FEMA and nonprofits may provide travel trailers for short-term emergency housing needs. And for longer-term needs, they typically provide manufactured homes. So the comprehensive plan supports these text amendment proposals through the Hazards and Resilience Section. That includes Policy 5, which is investing in building capacity to ensure long-term community resilience, and Action 3, which is a capacity building for resilience and preparedness. We looked at a number of jurisdictions in North Carolina to do research on the types of emergency housing ordinances that are out there. We spoke with Pendleton County about what had happened with them after Hurricane Florence. And we compared the different options for having different types of standards that would work with our community and our situation. And this is a list of some of those jurisdictions that we looked at, including Brevard, Asheville, Carteret County, Cape Carteret, and Whiteville. The summary of proposed text amendments I'll go through briefly and then we'll go through the standards next. So this included defining emergency housing, revising the definition of travel trailers, which includes RVs, adding emergency housing to our permitted use table and allowing it in all zoning districts with special requirements, adding emergency housing as an allowed use in our steep slope and our protected ridge overlay districts, and creating those special requirement standards, which I'll go over next. So special requirements includes that the applicant must have owned or occupied a primary residence that was damaged or be assisting with recovery efforts through a government, agency, nonprofit, or company. So that's the eligibility criteria. The housing may not obstruct or prevent recovery and debris removal operations, and it may not be permitted in a regulated flood way. It would be allowed for up to two years from the date of the declared emergency with the option to extend for an additional year. Must meet E911 addressing standards, be connected to approved utilities, and group sites must be accessed by a vehicular drive aisle on at least one side of the unit. Waste management of the site would be required, but the emergency housing is not required to be on the same lot as a damaged home. Within landslide and heavily damaged flood areas, we recommend that a geotechnical review be completed. That's a recommendation, not a requirement. Up to two units would be permitted on a single lot, except where those units are part of an approved group site, such as a FEMA group site. The emergency housing would need to meet the underlying zoning district setback requirements with an option for the zoning administrator to reduce those if necessary. And the travel trailers would be no closer than 10 feet apart from each other. One parking space would be required per unit, and they would be exempt from some of the steep slope and protected ridge overlay standards. So this hearing was properly noticed with a website notification and a legal ad in the Asheville Citizen Times on November 8th and on the 15th as well. The planning board recommended approval at their review on November 18th with the following revisions, which staff has no concerns about. Number one is a clarification that owners or the person that occupied the damaged property could apply for the emergency housing. And number two is that the travel trailers must connect to an approved wastewater system within three months. So that is a change from what was in the original text amendment sent to you. The planning board additionally made a request that we send a comment to the Board of Commissioners to appropriate funding to be allocated for low-to-moderate income households who would need geotechnical services and evaluations under this ordinance proposal. So the requested action by the Board of Commissioner for tonight is to hold a public hearing on these proposed text amendments and to vote on them with the comprehensive plan consistency statement. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you so much. Any initial questions?
Well, if you would just share, because I know you all put a lot of thought into this. So can you speak some to the special requirements that you put with this?
Just in general?
In general, yes, if there's, because...
Yeah, so when we look at different topics, we consider things like, are there situations that would require different types of parking standards, different types of access standards than what is required in general for all uses? If those types of uses are unique, then we can create separate types of standards within our special requirements section. So for instance, a daycare center might have special requirements that are different than, you know, just a typical single-family home or other type of business. So that is where we can get more specific to that type of use in a way that lets us kind of hone those standards to address things that would be maybe community concerns or different types of impacts that are unique to the use. Is that, is that kind of what you're asking about?
That's, that's fine. I just think that sometimes it's helpful for folks to understand like some of the rationale behind some of it. So that was useful, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for now? Okay, if not, let's open the public hearing at 6:27 PM. There are several folks who've signed up for, to speak during this public hearing. And if other folks would like to speak after we get through this list, you're welcome to do so. The first person that signed up is DeeDee Stiles.
I will start by saying I'm glad that the zoning regulations are being amended to allow people who have lost their homes due to the flood to be able to place travel trailers and mobile homes in many more places. After reviewing the text of the amendment, most items seem to make sense, but one item really seemed to be ill-conceived. In the proposed text, under Item 7 at Letter E, while it stated emergency housing shall be immediately connected to approved wastewater systems, there is an exception for travel trailers, allowing them three months from the date of placement to be connected to a wastewater system. What is going to happen to the wastewater of these, for these months? Especially for travel trailers on scattered locations on steep slopes? What is going to prevent some of that wastewater from ending up in nearby streams? Of course, it's against the law to dump wastewater into the waterway, but does the county have adequate personnel to monitor these sites or regularly testing streams for E. coli? Travel trailers that cannot be connected to an approved wastewater system can have a contract with a porta potty company to pump out their wastewater tanks at regular intervals. By not requiring a wastewater plan as soon as a travel trailer is placed, I believe the county is opening up the possibility that many waterways in our communities may become contaminated with E. coli or other wastewater contaminants. I know it is important to have these text amendments in force as quickly as possible so that our neighbors who have lost their homes can have a safe, warm place to live until their permanent housing can be replaced or repaired. But please, before you adopt these text amendments... But please, before you adopt these text amendments tonight, please change the wastewater part for travel trailers to require a wastewater connection or a contract to empty their wastewater tank with an approved porta potty company immediately upon placement of the travel trailer. Now, I don't know exactly how this works, but if changing the text tonight, the way I would like it to be, would delay the approval of these text amendments so people would have this option, then go ahead and approve it like it is. I wish that you can change it, but if that's not possible tonight, approve it tonight, and I will work with Department of Environmental Quality to get started on testing the streams. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sam Butison?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sam Burlison, and I, along with my wife, serve as co-pastors of Covenant Community Church in the Reynolds District. We live in Arden, North Carolina. First, let me express my deep gratitude for your extraordinary leadership during this very difficult time. Your efforts to restore essential services, including yesterday's early restoration of potable water, a month ahead of schedule, I think, demonstrate not just efficiency, but truly a commitment to the well-being of our community. You inspire confidence in all of us that together we can overcome every challenge that lies before us in this way. We at Covenant, like so many in our region, have witnessed firsthand the devastating toll Hurricane Helene has taken on our community, and while much progress has been made, the needs continue to remain urgent, particularly for families and children who have lost everything. The crisis has displaced, as you well know, more than 1,100 students in Buncombe County schools alone, children who just weeks ago were focused on school and friendship and who now are living in cars, tents, and temporary FEMA accommodations that are set to expire in just a few weeks. And these families are now looking to us for leadership, compassion, and swift action on the other side of that. At Covenant Community, we have partnered with Buncombe County Schools to create a transitional housing village for up to 30 displaced families, and our vision as we do this is to restore dignity by providing not just makeshift trailers, but fully-equipped travel trailers where families can live safely and rebuild their lives. We in doing this are prepared. We have the land, we have the partners, we have the resources, we have the civil engineers, and we have the general contractors already lined up, ready to break ground. The only thing that stands in the way is time. This is why I'm here today, to ask for your support of the proposed amendment to Chapter 78 of the Buncombe County zoning ordinances to accelerate the creation of emergency housing villages like ours and others. And while I think at times this ordinance may seem procedural or the acceptance of it, I think its impact is profoundly human. Every delay means another night that a child sleeps in a car, but every barrier that is removed is a step towards restoring hope to each one of our families who feel that they have no hope right now. I understand the importance of thoughtful planning, and we have worked closely to ensure that this project meets all necessary standards, but disasters demand this sense of urgency that you're now considering. So just as you move swiftly to restore water, I'm confident that together we can clear the path for housing solutions that meet the scale of the crisis. So let me say thank you again. Thank you for your confidence and your clarity in the face of adversity and the way you have demonstrated resilience and commitment to our community. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Sam. Tim Lloyd?
Good evening. My name is Timothy Lloyd. You usually see me up here decked out in red with my union coworkers in NCAE, but tonight I'm not in my red, so I'm not speaking as a labor leader, though to be fair, I will be speaking about public schools a lot. But I'm most likely here, or mostly here, speaking as myself and in favor of the emergency housing amendment and in support of my pastor, Sam. At a community meeting last night, I heard someone say that while everyone in western North Carolina went through the same storm, we all have our own experiences. Some people rode out the storm and had power and water restored in days. Others rejoiced the other day at the water announcement after weeks without potable water, and some had to deal with the tragic loss of property, or even worse, a loss of life. I bring up personal experiences because even though I'm not here with my NCAE people tonight, this issue does affect our schools greatly. When it comes to how the public school community has been affected, we need to remember that even before the storm, there were students and families that were housing insecure and some that were fully homeless. Staff also in the schools were struggling with also finding appropriate housing in the area. And what this storm has done is add even more to that number. In my local union, a member had their home leveled by the storm, changing the lives of not just them, but their spouse and their two kids, all of whom are deeply connected to the public school community here. And while FEMA has done tremendous work, many people are still struggling with the paperwork and the language necessary to get the true life-changing funding needed to get back firmly on their feet. So tonight, I come here as a member of both NCAE and my church, Covenant Community, to speak to the great power and urgency that this amendment possesses and requires. Please move forward this amendment tonight. Our community needs it now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on the proposal? I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:36 PM. Commissioners, further discussion or motion?
Got a question for Nate again, of course. Nate, apologies. I think this question is a little bit broader than text amendments, but as you know, there's RVs and travel trailers and tiny homes and things that look like tiny homes but aren't tiny homes. I feel like the technology and housing types kind of evolve faster than our vocabulary and our ability to label them and talk about them.
What?
My question is, like, within the context of this ordinance, but also outside the context of it, can you kind of describe where we're at in terms of what's allowed?
Sure.
What will be allowed if this were to pass?
So what we've done thus far at administrative level are mostly to deal with folks that have had some amount of damages to their home. And the way that was handled originally, there was three colors of placards that went up almost immediately. They were green, yellow, and red, red being where you probably sustain more of a structural issue to your home, flooding that, you know, was in excess of four to five, maybe even to the ceiling. So based on these placards that went out, we began to see folks coming in with permits, whether it be to just restore electricity, whether it be to cite a RV on their home. So going back to what you said earlier, when you see these tiny homes on wheels, those are treated like RVs. You have manufactured homes that are built to HUD standards. You have any other type, there are numerous other housing types, and some, what we're seeing as well, are basically, there's a lot of housing types that are not really houses at all, are not meant for habitation. So that's where we've actually seen some sheds. Now, those, we do not have the ability to affect building code at the local level. So everything we're doing here is within our power and within our wheelhouse. What we did was we sat down immediately with FEMA and we said, okay, what standards do we need for group sites to the village concept? What can be done at a church? What can be done at a FEMA sanctioned site? What can be done to get someone an RV at their house? Other things that aren't necessarily discussed in this amendment that we've done thus far as well is FEMA has placed a number of people in hotel rooms. They've converted short-term rentals to long-term leases. So this does sort of fill in the missing gaps of where we need to be to get us further, to get us through the winter. But I want to be clear, we have done as much as we can at the administrative level, and that's why we're bringing this to you tonight, to take it to the next level. And that's just a wide-ranging summary. Now, I heard a lot of comments about wastewater itself. We have reached out to MSD. We've talked to environmental health. If someone's got a connection at a damaged house, they can still use their septic system. We can work with them on re-establishing that connection. MSD is going to work with us on getting someone hooked up to their existing tap. MSD is going to work with us on the group sites, and the group sites need to be a little bit better serviced, so they need to have the water, they need to have the electricity. You're going to have to build out some additional infrastructure, and we work with the fire marshal. The last thing we want to do is take one person from a harmful situation and put them in another harmful situation. That's why it's not a good idea to put RVs in floodways. So what we're trying to do is bring an amendment that measures and evaluates risk. It evaluates situations. It's not going to be perfect, but we do need as much flexibility as possible so that the staff can work and get the community to where we need to be to get through winter. That's kind of a broad overview of this.
Last question. There has been some sort of waiver of building code requirements? I don't know if I'm using, I don't know if waiver is the right word, but is that...
I'm not the best person to speak about any particular building code. I do know that our permits folks have reached out to the Department of Insurance. I do know that this probably has more to do with the protection of potable water lines and protecting them from freezing, whether you need to wrap them in a certain kind of heating tape. There have been adjustments that we have had to take to Raleigh. Avril, do you know anything?
I think my question is, there's nothing that's, there's nothing that's going to hinder this ordinance on the books today, like this will work, it's not going to run into any other roadblocks. That's my question, really.
Correct. And I think what you're talking about, to Nate's point, it is about the water system and the sewer as well coming into the housing unit. Currently, our standards, which is the housing standards, the home building code for North Carolina, as well as the FEMA standards currently, state that the pipe should be buried below the frost line. And we were trying to figure if there's a way around that so we can quickly place homes, but that is where we are now, working with the state Fire Marshal's Office and the state building code office in Raleigh to see if there's a waiver for that.
Okay.
I don't anticipate them conflicting. We wrote this in a way that we tried to avoid that kind of thing.
All right. Any other questions at this time, or is there a motion?
Move that we adopt the proposed text amendment with Comprehensive Plan consistency statement.
I can.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, the third public hearing is to consider the administration of a small business job retainer grant program to assist those individuals who have suffered substantial financial damages due to Hurricane Helene. And EB Oderstall is here to help us out with this item. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, tonight we're talking about the Helene Relief ARPA reallocation fund and the Small Business Grant Program. For your background, on November 1st, the Board of Commissioners approved the reallocation of ARPA funds for the Helene relief programs. Afterwards, staff put out an RFP to identify partners for management of the small business relief funds and noticed today's hearing. On November 12th, staff reviewed and selected Mountain Bizworks' proposal. Through the RFP, we attempted to get competitive proposals and are moving forward after review of the proposal that we did receive. For tonight's request, we are asking that the Board of Commissioners, for your approval for the following, a resolution authorizing the 1.5 million economic development appropriation for Helene relief and authorization to the county manager to contract with Mountain Bizworks for administration of the program. Tonight, I want to tell you a little bit more about the current need. As you all know, in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene, hundreds of businesses have experienced economic injury and interruptions to operations impacting our local workforce. While we do have many programs that can support businesses, many of our local businesses are still recovering from COVID-19 and will not be able to sustain their operations without grants. We've seen some updated numbers from a few of our local partners. Currently, as of last week, there were 92 million estimated uninsured economic losses to small businesses in Buncombe County alone, based on applications to the Mountain Bizworks program so far. Local independent restaurants are seeing 60% to 70% less in revenue compared to this time last year. As you all know, our tourism season is high in October, and missing October was devastating to our local restaurants. And there have so far been an estimated 10,000 to 12,000 unemployment filings in Buncombe County alone. This is based off of the total state numbers. We'll have more details about Buncombe County soon, but already our percentage has jumped quite high compared to where we've been at a historic low of about 2.9%. We're now around 12% unemployment. For our small business support model, on eligibility, small businesses impacted by Hurricane Helene with fewer than 25 employees will be able to apply. They must demonstrate ability to retain or rehire their employees. We want to see that they can do so for six months from the grant award, and all industries are eligible to apply. No specific focus for the grant by way of industry. For usage of the funds, we want to see business operations tied to that retainer and rehiring of their employees. Previously, we had noted that grants will be up to $5,000 for one employee or more retained, or $2,500 for a single employee. We noted that we would work with the fund manager to assess needs, and grants could be higher dependent on need. So far, we are seeing that the grants that are being requested by local businesses are higher, so I anticipate, though, we'll be talking with Mountain Bizworks about increasing that amount. And we propose that Mountain Bizworks would be the grant fund administrator pending board authorization in the public hearing this evening. I also wanted to note that their contract includes a 2.5% administration fee for program administration of the grant. For our timeline and next steps, if approved, Buncombe County will finalize the contract with Mountain Bizworks. Our timeline, on November 1st, the RFP opened. On November 6th, we noticed the public hearing in the Citizen Times. November 8th, the RFP closed, and by November 12th, we selected the vendor. Tonight, we're having this public hearing, and then we anticipate that the first awards will be made in early to mid-December. Again, our request this evening will be for the Board of Commissioners to conduct the following, the public hearing and approval of the resolution authorizing $1.5 million for the economic development appropriation for Helene relief and authorize the county manager to contract with Mountain Bizworks to administer the program. Are there any questions?
And is the intent, I know that they just released, I think it was last week, the grant that they are doing and other fundings come into that, is the intent for this funding to go into that, and they'll just administer it with the others?
Correct. Mountain Bizworks is administering another $1.5 million from a few additional resources, and so we'll be using their now common grant application, and their staff will be making the determination about which funding program is best aligned with where the business is located, all of those eligibility criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Stated in here that it's 25 employees or less, and it's proprietorship. What about partnerships, C corporations, any other that's less than 25 employees?
Sorry, pardon me, partnerships, C corporations?
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner, I think we're focusing on any business structure, as long as that 25.
It's any, that's what I wanted to be sure of. Okay. As long as it's 25 or less. Thanks.
All right, other questions? All right, if not, let's open the public hearing at 6:48 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Okay, close the public hearing at 6:48 PM. Further discussion or a motion?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing 1.5 million economic development appropriation for Helene relief and authorize the county manager to contract with Mountain Bizworks to administer the program. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, we now come to the county manager's report.
Just a quick report this afternoon, Commissioners. I'd like to introduce to you David Swett. David is a public health professional with more than 30 years of experience servicing Buncombe, servicing public and improving the health of communities. He has worked for the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, the Texas Department of Health, UNC Center for Public Health Preparedness, and most recently, the Mecklenburg County Department of Health. Mrs. Swett serves as a deputy health director and chief of epidemiology in Memphis, Tennessee for more than eight years. He's a graduate of Baylor University, Duke University. He's a graduate of Baylor University, Duke University Divinity School, and the UNC School of Public Health in Chapel Hill. Mr. Swett has always sought opportunities to serve others and the communities where he lives. He's married and has three daughters, one of whom worked for Buncombe County, several pets, and enjoys spending time outdoors in his free time hiking and cycling. He will serve as our new Public Health and Human Services Director, so join me in welcoming David Swett to the team.
All right, David, welcome.
Just thank y'all for the opportunity to serve alongside you.
We glad to have you on the team. Welcome to Buncombe County, great group. All right, Avril, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, terrific. All right, there's no items under old business, so we go to new business. First item is consideration of an authorization to reallocate COVID recovery funding from the Ferry Road Infrastructure Project to the Cox Avenue Affordable Housing Development. And Tyler Henry is here to provide more information.
There's actually no presentation for this. So, good evening, Commissioners. So the purpose of this is to take action on the information that was already presented by DSI at the previous meeting regarding affordable housing projects. So Hurricane Helene had several severe impacts on our community's infrastructure and housing needs. The Ferry Road project requires an access road and other infrastructure to be built, making the project more difficult to construct at this time because it would be competing against other projects and needs that currently exist in Buncombe County. The delayed timeline of the project to construct Ferry Road will also put COVID recovery funds at risk of not being spent on time. The Cox Avenue Affordable Housing Project will be able to move much quicker, allowing funds to go towards meeting the need of affordable housing in the community while also meeting requirements set by US Department of Treasury. So tonight, we are asking for the Commission to consider approval of changes to COVID recovery funding awards as listed in the RBA by reducing Ferry Road by the 3.7 million amount and then reallocating it to the Cox Avenue Affordable Housing Development Project.
Very good. All right, Commissioners, questions?
Motion to approve the changes of the COVID recovery funding awards as listed.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and second, further discussion? So the only, I'm certainly supportive of the motion. The only other comment I would make around the Cox Avenue proposed development, it's a really exciting development, will put 200 very affordable workforce sector-focused apartments in the heart of our downtown. Something that hasn't happened, I don't know, in a very long time. So allowing people who work downtown to live downtown, walk to work. It's going to be a great infill development on county-owned property. It's been a great public involvement process. So really excited about it, and let's do everything we can to accelerate getting it across the finish line, which this will help do. This project is anticipated to also need additional county investment from our housing bond funds. Like the ARPA funds will not, you know, fill the entire financial gap to achieve this level of affordability. So we have some resources there. Of course, since we approved the county's Affordable Housing Bond Fund, since the voters approved it two years ago, you know, we've been supporting a really great pipeline of projects, right? We just had a groundbreaking on the lakeshore Villas, 120 units in Arden yesterday. So that project is under construction, there's others that we're supporting as well. You know, the other piece of good news, we need to celebrate it where we can get it these days right, is, you know, the voters in Asheville just approved an additional Affordable Housing Bond referendum that was on the ballot a few weeks ago. And so this project is in the city. So, and we appreciate the city council's really supportive approach around the permitting and zoning for the project. But since that is there, then there could be an opportunity as well to encourage the city to consider partnering on the project as well. Because if we have to use just the ARPA funds and our county housing bond funds, you know, there's not a lot of remaining unobligated funds there. So it's not just sort of asking the city to financially contribute, you know, for its own sake. But it will be really valuable over the next year or two for the county to have some remaining, you know, powder to spend on other projects in the unincorporated areas of the county, right? So, so that might be an argument, which the city, I think, will fully appreciate because they know that, like, workers live inside and outside the city limit. So just to say, as we look at the funding for this project and the public funding for it, I hope we will reach out and encourage the city to, you know, consider partnering with us on this project as well. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, next is authorization for the county manager to execute individual structured leases between the county and Milestone Towers, land lease between the county and property owners of the Broad River Tower, and co-location lease between the county and Verizon Wireless for radio towers and to improve cellular connectivity. It's a mouthful. Vance Bell is here to tell us more.
Hopefully, I don't have to say that. Yeah, so if you recall, it came before you all in July, to give you a heads up that this was going to be coming, that we needed to do a public notice due to the length of terms of some of these leases that we're entering into. But basically, I'm hoping the result of this is that we get another little bit of good news and get a major carrier up and running, a major cellular carrier up and running in a area that sorely needs it, in the Broad River Garen Creek area. So just a quick reminder, so you authorized us to execute a master services agreement last year with Milestone. This is kind of the baking of the sausage, so to speak. So now we're looking to execute the individual site leases with Milestone. We are asking you to authorize us to enter into the contract with the landowners of the specific tower site. And we're asking you to authorize us to enter into a agreement with a major carrier to locate on that site. And I'll welcome any questions. Am I missing anything, Kirk?
Just wanted to make sure that there are three things that were kind of bundled them all together. But the first thing is, is for the Broad River Tower, we have renegotiated the lease with the landowners, and we are going to extend that out for an additional 10-year term with the option of another three, five-year terms. So that's the first one. The second thing is, is that we're entering into a co-location lease with Bell Atlantic, aka also known as Verizon Wireless, to co-locate on that site. And that too is another 25-year term lease. Finally, we are asking you to authorize the manager to enter into 12 structural leases, which is not a lease for the property, but basically the vacant space on our 12 towers so that Verizon, or not Verizon, but Milestone can go out and market those sites to get more carriers to improve the service within all those areas. So those, that, that's basically what our asks are tonight.
And just to add to that, we've already had several other carriers reaching out on other tower sites. So we're, we're looking forward to getting better coverage for our facilities.
This is, this is great and long-awaited news, so thank you. And I just have one question, based on what we just experienced with Helene and the lessons that we've learned with this, do we have everything stated in these agreements that's going to provide us the greatest flexibility to make sure that service gets restored in case we have future issues?
Yeah, I believe so. There's, there's obviously only so much they can do when, when fiber lines are cut to some of these very rural areas. But I believe we have everything in here that we can possibly do to, to really push as much as we can on those things.
Okay, thank you. I will make a motion to grant the county manager permission to enter into a new property lease with the Cato's and Bakers for 221 T Still Springs Road, enter into a co-location agreement with Verizon Wireless for the use of the Broad River Tower at 221 T Still Springs Road, and enter into 12 structural leases with Milestone.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Do you have a quick question for Vance, if that's okay?
Sure.
Is there any available information data from either NCDIT or anyone that could kind of, at a high level, explain how coverage has improved since Helene? It feels like that's true to me in some small ways in some places, but I assume a lot of the equipment broke and was replaced. I'm just, yeah.
You're asking, I'm assuming you're asking about the current state of coverage?
Yeah, just the current state of coverage.
So we, we worked directly with some of the major providers like AT&amp;T and Verizon and US Allard while we were working out of the Emergency Operations Center. They were providing us daily updates on their, their towers and their infrastructure outages. And as it stands right now, Verizon got theirs up, all of their tower sites up within, I want to say, two and a half weeks? Well, they got all their sites back up and running. AT&amp;T beat them, I can't remember the exact number of days that they did to get that up and running, but they, they got all their tower sites up even quicker. So as it stands right now, I know of no operational issues with those cellular providers in our county. Okay, thank you.
Question I have is these towers go up, you know, as we finish. Who receives that money for it? The county?
So yes, that's, that's part of this too. So Milestone helps us to actively market our available tower space.
Right.
And as we enter into the agreements with these carriers, they get, they get a percentage of the revenue and we get a percentage of the revenue from, from those carriers.
What percentage do we get?
So based on new customers that Milestone brings on, they receive 40%, and we receive 60%.
The county will receive 60%?
Correct.
Okay.
But for existing, like the, the co-location one that you're approving tonight, we would be splitting that with the, we have, with the Cato's and the Bakers. They would, I believe, get a percentage.
With who now?
The, the people that were leasing the property from where the radio towers are. So we have some agreements where unfortunately, we have
With the landowners.
Yeah, so they, they also get, get, get a percentage of that.
So we get less than 60%?
No, because we would get a greater percentage on existing, on existing contracts. So, so this lease that you're approving tonight would be an existing contract. So I believe we would be splitting that with the Cato's or, I think Milestone gets 10%?
Of existing, correct.
Right, so they would get 10%, then the 90% we would end up splitting. I think that the Cato's get 40% of that 90%.
And we get 60% of the 90.
If, yeah.
Correct. If I, if I may, Commissioner, Strategy and Innovation did a really good job of helping us put together some projections, some 20-year projections based on this, and I'll be happy to get that to Sarah so she can give you some numbers related to that.
Oh, well, we negotiated that on some of our family land in another state, so I was just curious.
We have a myriad of, of different agreements with landowners and, and it's amazing what some of the folks, what's important. Yeah, so, yeah, it's anything else I can help you folks with?
All right, if there's no other questions, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, folks.
All right, thank you.
Happy Co-Commissioner Appreciation Month, by the way.
We're sharing it, yeah. It's nice.
Yeah.
You got it first. Okay, next item is authorization for the county manager to amend the Mountain Community Capital Fund operating agreement. And EB is back to help us out again with this one?
Yes, Logan. So on November 7th, I provided an overview and presentation to you all during the regular meeting, given that we did not have briefing, as an opportunity to make sure that you all had two reviews of the material. But we'll move through this one quickly tonight. The Mountain Community Capital Fund is a loan guarantee fund for small business loans in Asheville and Buncombe County. It was established in 2018 and is a collaboration between local partners, including Mountain Biz Works, the city of Asheville, and Buncombe County. This loan fund is intended for business owners who don't have collateral, which can be a barrier to getting a business loan. And entrepreneurs of color and borrowers with low incomes are encouraged to apply. We have been working with the city on updates to the operating agreement so that it will better reflect how the operating committee currently works. The key changes to the agreement are provided below and include evergreening of the document to define key roles and removing references to specific organizations. The agreement is for a five-year term with the option to renew. And there is an updated allocation of losses, which are to be based on the funding sources. And we've also moved the description of funding sources into a separate exhibit. The city is also taking action on the agreement. They are following a ratification process, and it has already been signed by the city manager and will be ratified by city council in December. Details about that action are, were included in the memo in your packet this evening. So for our request and next steps, our request is that you all authorize the county manager to sign the updated Mountain Community Capital Fund operating agreement. And then for your awareness on next steps, this will also help facilitate, the Mountain Community Capital Fund will be seeking a new custodian of funds by February, and so this will help facilitate that process. Do y'all have any questions?
Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the county manager to sign the updated Mountain Community Capital Fund operating agreement.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you all.
Okay. Next is consideration of a budget amendment to purchase three pieces of equipment for solid waste that are currently used on a month, month lease. John Hudson's here to tell us about it.
Good evening. So fiscal analysis of the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund has been conducted to work on cost savings and long-term revenue scenarios. And this amendment will add $280,293 to purchase leased solid waste equipment to include a wheel loader, a landfill compactor, and excavator to avoid excessive lease-end costs. This will be balanced by realizing excess revenues received over this fiscal year.
Motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, John. And the next is consideration of a budget amendment to appropriate state 911 fund balance for backup center equipment, recorders, additional training, increased telephone expenses, fire station alerting, CAD upgrades, and equipment maintenance and monitoring.
We're going to do something about these long-term. So
Thank you.
So this budget amendment appropriates $859,927 of fund balance in the 911 Emergency Telephone System Fund to provide to buy all the things that you just said. And that is just of this one.
Motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, and next is consideration of an inter-local agreement with the town of Black Mountain, town of Woodfin, and the city of Asheville for right-of-entry process. And Amy Broughton is here to explain.
Good evening. As you know, Tropical Storm Helene yielded over 10 million cubic yards of debris countywide, and that includes the municipalities as well. And much of that is on private property. FEMA generally does not pay for private property debris removal, PPDR, but they will do so under certain circumstances. Next slide, please. Or can I do that? This is great. FEMA will do funding for private property debris removal if there's a public interest, if there's an immediate threat to health, safety, and welfare, and if it's, the debris is a result of a declared incident. As everyone knows, President Biden and the governor declared that North Carolina, Western North Carolina would be a disaster zone pre-storm, so we were ready for it. There are approximately five, excuse me, 4,000 private property owners that have debris on their property right now. So in order to qualify for the FEMA private property debris removal, a property owner has to fill out an application, which also requires that they show that their homeowners or property owner's insurance does not pay for debris removal. They have to complete a right-of-entry form, which is two pages, highly bureaucratic, very detailed. The property also has to undergo an inspection. So once all of that is done, then that is So once all of that is done, then that is given to FEMA to either determine if they're going to pay or not pay for debris removal by the Army Corps of Engineers. The county hired Tetra Tech as our disaster consultant, um, and they are going to handle this highly detailed intake process. They're going to do it either, uh, in intake centers, in person, uh, at a number of locations throughout the county. There's going to be a PPDR dashboard where residents can apply online. Um, there's also going to be a call center. So that's how Buncombe County is going to handle it. The city of Asheville and the, uh, town of Black Mountain have requested that Buncombe County, by and through Tetra Tech, also handle their intakes because it's, we've already got the process in place that's going to be streamlined. It's also going to be paid for by FEMA. So even if Buncombe County handles these intakes, we are still anticipating a 100% reimbursement. So the purpose of the inter-local agreement with the city of Asheville and with the city of Black Mountain, Woodfin has declined to proceed, um, would be for Buncombe County to handle the PPDR intake process only, not the actual collection. Uh, both the city of Asheville and the town of Black Mountain would have to task the Corps of Engineers independently. So this board has legal authority under 153A-445 to enter into an inter-local agreement. Under the agreement, um, that was posted, Buncombe County would administer the intake process and share the relevant data to the municipalities. The municipalities would have to provide us with, provide the county with contact information and cooperate with Tetra Tech, um, cooperate with the county concerning FEMA reimbursement, which I know we're concerned with, um, hold the county harmless, and then they would coordinate with their own, either third-party debris remover or the Corps. So that's basically the crux of the argument. And if the board would like to enter to that agreement, it is there for you. That's it.
Do, do we know why Woodfin isn't entering into this with us?
I received, uh, an email from, uh, manager Touch, Tuck. And she stated that because the county would not be handling the actual debris removal, that Woodfin simply wanted to proceed with SDR and debris tech, and they would handle their own intake.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Make a motion to approve the inter-local agreement.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, consideration of a resolution authorizing the county manager to contract with Grace Covenant Presbyterian Church to administer the household assistance program and to allocate the remaining funding to economic services for household assistance. What? EB is back again.
Last one.
You got all the good agenda items tonight.
It is, um, you know, rewarding to be a part of them. Uh, yes, last one. Uh, Helene Relief Household Assistance Grant Program. Uh, for your background, on November 1st, the Board of Commissioners approved the reallocation of ARPA funds for the Helene Relief Programs. Staff released an RFP to identify partners who could manage the household assistance relief funds. We received and reviewed, uh, two proposals and one was selected, which was Grace Covenant's request for $300,000. Staff recommend proceeding with Grace Covenant and administering the remaining funds via Buncombe County Economic Services with additional temporary staffing resources. So our request tonight is for the Board of Commissioners' approval for the following: a resolution authorizing the county manager to contract with Grace Covenant to administer the program, and allocation of the remaining funding to economic services for household assistance. Uh, for, um, just a overview of the current need, in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene, the livelihoods of Buncombe County residents have been impacted by both lost employment and wages as well as physical damage to real and personal property. While many programs may exist to support members of our community, there are individuals impacted by Helene who will not be able to recover with their personal insurance and FEMA assistance alone. Uh, so far, the current individual assistance claims are at 80,000 with 70 million paid out by FEMA. Uh, for our household support model, eligibility will be for households that experienced economic impact from Hurricane Helene and are at or below 80% AMI. Economic impact does include both lost wages, employment, and physical property damage. The usage of funds will be for life essential needs such as utility bills, fuel, rent, mortgage, internet access, et cetera. And, um, we are looking to provide a direct assistance grants paid to the service provider and not directly to individuals. Uh, staff are also working on other components of the model, um, such as an emphasis on the max number of months as opposed to a maximum number of dollars per household. And then, um, having an open window for applications, um, to make sure that everybody has awareness and the ability to apply emphasizing, again, accessibility in the community. And we're proposing that the funds be administered by Buncombe County Partners. Uh, the recommendation, uh, from staff is to award, um, the full amount requested by Grace Covenant, $30,000 for Helene Relief, including rental assistance. Um, and then, um, to allocate the remaining funds to economic services, who will utilize the remaining 1.2 million to administer Helene Relief, including rental assistance via Buncombe County Government. Both organizations will administer programs that track income, demographic data, and benefit Buncombe County residents who are at or below 80% of the average median income. Sorry, area median income. Additionally, the programs will minimize administrative fees to maximize the resident relief. For our timeline and next steps, if approved, Buncombe County will finalize the contract with Grace Covenant. On our timeline, November 1st, the RFP opened and closed by November 8th. On November 13th, the vendors were reviewed and selected, and tonight we are here, um, at the regular meeting with you. Our anticipated timeline, um, moving forward with the Grace contract would be, um, to have a contract on by November 22nd. And then in December, payments will be dispersed on a rolling basis. So for our request, uh, Board of Commissioners will be for the Board of Commissioners' approval for the following: a resolution authorizing the county manager to contract with Grace Covenant to administer the program, and allocation of remaining funding to economic services for household assistance. Any questions?
Not a question, but just want to thank staff for moving, um, so swiftly on, on this and on the Small Business Relief Program. It's really, um, incredible to see the work that's being done. And to, um, in advance, thank staff of Economic Services who will be, uh, administering this and the folks at, um, Grace Covenant and the many partners working there. It's just, um, very, very inspiring. So thank you all for all the hard work.
I echo Commissioner Beach Ferraris' comments with that, particularly in light of us hearing, not just this evening, but prior to this evening, how we know there's a lot of funding flowing into our community to support people. Getting it to them quickly and timely has been a challenge. And I've heard nothing but incredible things about what's happening at Grace Covenant in terms of how swiftly they're able to respond to the need, and that is to be commended. I am curious, within our Economic Services, um, Department, how quickly we'll be able to activate staff to respond to those requests, um, through Buncombe County Government.
Yeah, great question, Commissioner. Uh, we've been working, um, with staff, uh, to identify the next steps. And one will be working through, uh, an existing relationship with a, a staffing firm. Um, so we're working on next steps on getting started, including identifying, um, the temporary positions.
Thank you, EB.
Hey, parking, uh, long with Jasmine, uh, visited Grace Covenant and saw the operation firsthand. And they even put us to work, you know? And it's carrying water. But they had, that's, that will be money well spent. And they have a excellent operation there. So it's no need of us recreating wheel.
I'm just curious, with what we heard about the evictions that are already occurring, is there, is there any way with this funding to be able to go ahead and get it out there so quickly that it helps some of those who are already missing payments? And I know that's probably a challenge, but I'm just curious if there's any way.
May I can speak to what's happening at Grace Covenant? They're open seven days a week from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM, um, and are, um, uh, expediting, working with folks who have eviction notices.
Good.
Um, and their model is to get on the phone with the landlord, um, and make the payment directly. So their primary focus is on preventing eviction. I think the need exceeds probably, um, that, but, but just in terms of immediacy, that's kind of how they're triaging right now.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, if people want to apply for some of these resources, they could apply to Grace Covenant or to the county. They couldn't apply to both, though, right? Because this is sort of, they're sort of doing similar functions, right? Am I, do I have that correct?
Our intention with the, the application process, at least in the county end, will be to ask about the resources that people have already applied for, including FEMA, and whether or not they've received insurance to get a picture. In particular with FEMA, um, we've been advised to help residents avoid duplicative benefit. And so we will be asking about previous applications to any other funding sources.
Right, I mean, but a lot of folks will be receiving other, you know, FEMA support or things like that, that if they're seeking like this specific funding from the county, could they, could they get it from both? Or would we say no? It's like, you know, we're using Grace Covenant because we want to like get these resources out ASAP. So the county's got a platform, Grace Covenant's got a platform. Or could people apply to both? If they, if they show the need, receive the, receive the resources from both county investment resources?
That's a great question, and I'll, um, put it on our follow-up with Economic Services staff to ask about how they want to proceed.
I don't necessarily have a position on it, other than we should just try to get clear on it upfront so people don't, um, waste their time if they can't do that, or we know upfront like that is a possibility, um, for folks. Okay. And, um. All right, so any other questions? All right. All, uh, we have a motion and second on this. Yes. We do not, all right.
I move to approve as presented.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that is everything in our new business. We have no board appointments. Um, is there any update on when, uh, we anticipate we might? Because county boards are still not currently active, right? As we're very focused on emergency response and recovery. Is there any, um, kind of outlook on when that might resume? Or is that sort of to be determined?
Still to be determined. As soon as we can release the majority of our staff and still work in emergencies, then they will have the time to be liaisons again. But at this moment, that's still to be determined.
Understood. All right, we do have one announcement. The next regular meeting of the Buncombe County Commission will be on Monday, December 2nd at 5:00 PM. The regular meeting will include the organizational meeting to swear in newly elected commissioners. There is no additional need for a closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.